Okay, I think we're about ready. Make sure IT says we're good to go. I got the thumbs up. So we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order of the City Council on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Clerk, our new Madam Clerk.
Councilman Leonard. Councilman Rigsby. Mayor Protem Daily.
President.
Mayor Duper.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And just for the note, Councilmember Jindal is apparently on a vacation out of the country. So he won't be able to do the invocation, so we've asked Ron to do the invocation for us tonight.
What's his name?
Yeah, that guy.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to invite members of the public that would wish to speak on any non-agendized item to step forward, and I have two cards. I have Mr. Scott Ward. And if you would, yes, please, come on down, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I am here representing San Bernardino County Third District Supervisor Dawn Rao, who wanted to send congratulations and thanks to a couple of your city employees who are heading off to retirement, Barbara Nicholson, of course, and Richard Holdaway. I brought presents to commemorate the occasion. Barbara, we want to thank you very much as a city clerk. You're one of the unsung heroes of keeping a community moving and really giving back a whole lot. So, thank you for twenty-seven years, thirty-five years, wow, with the city of Loma Linda. Luckily, I didn't put a number down. So Barbara, thank you for all you have done, not only for the city, but the citizens of San Bernardino County, so. I will yield my time. Mr. Holdaway, could I say the same thing to you, that we thank you for the work that you've done, keeping all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted over the years, and wish you the best in retirement as well. Thank you.
Okay, we're actually, we're gonna do something to acknowledge those retirements here, and we're gonna move it a little bit further up in the agenda, but I do have another public speaker, Dick Wiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Rich for his time and effort. I know it's been a long time down here. We've gone through quite a few meetings. We've learned a lot, we've seen a lot of what's going on, and I appreciate your time and effort. And you talk about a gentleman, here's a class, right here, and it's been a lot of interesting work with Barbara, the same thing. Been real good friends with her since she was on, and I appreciate the work that she's done. And I understand we've got one other leaving. And you told me about it last night, and I appreciate the work that Conrad has done. He's helped in a lot of ways around here that a lot of people don't see, and it's only after they've gone that they are missed. So I thank you three, at this point, for all the work that was done and the effort and the time that was put in. So I thank you, and then if you want to try to do that, we'll do that now.
All right, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Dick. You're an example of the sort of people that we've worked with here in Loma Linda and the community, and you're a good example of why Loma Linda's a great place to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dick, I appreciate it, and echo the words of the mayor, the city attorney, I'm sorry.
Well, we will, actually, I'd like to take item number fourteen and start with that, which is announcing the retirement of our city attorney, Mr. Rich Holdaway. And we have to do some little, some business, we need to approve or designate a new city attorney. And so, I'm not sure if you want to speak to that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, I've had a good partner for all these years that I've been out here, and she hasn't always been at the meetings, but in the background, she's been a tremendous resource to me and filled in from time to time as necessary. But that is the item on your agenda tonight, is to fill my vacancy as of the end of this year. I won't be totally retired, as you know, and I may have some other comments later, but if we're addressing the agenda item, it's within your discretion to make the appointment, and I'll let you take it from there.
And is that a recommendation from you?
You know, there are these conflict issues that I've pretty much glossed over, but absolutely, the letter that's in your agenda packet includes that recommendation.
Awesome. So do we need a motion, or where do we go with this?
If we don't do a motion, does he can't retire? Yes, to keep working?
Good point.
The motion is to approve an agreement and appoint Diane Robbins as our new city attorney, as of January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Second with a comment before we do the vote. Rich, it's, in the various administrative roles I had before I retired, I always made it a point to try to find people that were smarter than me to be available for advice. And you are one of those people. You know things that I don't know, and you're articulate, you're compassionate, and you believe in what you're doing for the state of California, and you have been loyal to the city of Loma Linda. So, thank you, thank you. I have, I not only am impressed, I've been an admirer of yours for a while. And as you know, you and I have gone through similar personal circumstances in losing sons. Your support and words of wisdom have meant a lot. So, thank you.
The motion is to approve an agreement appointing Diane Robbins as a city attorney as of January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The motion passed.
So, before we put this item to bed, I think, I'm not sure I can expand much further on what's already been said, but Rich, you are a phenomenal person, and we appreciate you, and we're very thankful for you, and we're going to miss you. And although we have a great new attorney in your place, we definitely would love to see you, should you visit sometime. And Barbara, we're gonna really miss you also. So hopefully you will come around and visit. And I know that there's an internal city event thing planned, right, coming up? Or no? Did I blow the whistle on that? Okay, okay, she's looking at me like I'm, so, because there are some traditional things we do as a city that we give to people when they retire, depending on how many years on. Okay, okay.
The reason is, she's the one who ordered it.
Oh.
And then, so it took a little while to get here.
Got it, okay. All right. Okay, okay, so we'll heap accolades on you then. But anyway, welcome to the stage, Lynette Ariolo, correct? Is that how I say it? And you are now our new city clerk, so welcome aboard. We're sorry to see both of you guys go.
Don't forget, she had been with the city twenty-seven years, so.
Oh, she's not a male. Maybe that was the pla, maybe that was her plaque. Okay, so if we could then, just moving along with that new business, could we adopt the meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-two?
I believe it's really just informational, unless somebody has a problem with it. We've always met, the second and fourth Tuesdays are reserved for regular city council meetings. We try to agendize items for one meeting a month when possible and reserve that fourth Tuesday should business assess the dates. So really, only an informational item unless somebody has an issue with any of the dates.
Okay. All right, seeing nobody object strenuously, we'll move on to item number one, which is a public hearing on a conditional use permit in variance, and this has to do with our ever-growing hotel chains.
Good evening, Mayor Duper, councilmen, members of the public. My name is Lorena Materita, I am the senior planner for the city of Loma Linda, and tonight I have one public hearing item for the Courtyard Hotel. To give you an idea of an existing setting, it is a one-point-four-two-acre vacant site on Richardson. It is north of Redlands Boulevard and south of the Ten Freeway. The land use designation per the general plan is commercial, and it is zoned general commercial. Surrounding uses include Holiday Inn Express, it's to the west, Town Play Suites to the north, and in two thousand and nine, this council approved Candlewood, and that is directly to the west and adjacent. This area is called Hotel Square, you might have seen the name on the freeway sign driving by, so this fourth hotel is the final point on the square. Directly north is also a city wildsite and South Tower. The old Tri-City Drive-In, now vacant, is east across the street, across Richardson Street. The GM Truck Repair and the IK Center, which I believe this council approved about a year or two ago as well, will be directly south. And not too far southwest is the Dutch Motel, so that's just giving you an idea of the existing setting. The applicant is Haral Patel with Sagement Hotels. He's been before this council several times with his three previous applications for a hotel. This time, it's a conditional use permit to construct a seventy-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one square feet, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-room, four-story courtyard by Marriott Hotel with related parking and landscape improvements. Along with this CUP is a variance request. He's requesting to allow relief from Loma Linda Municipal Code's parking regulations that require seven loading spaces at the site. He's asking approval for a reduction from the required seven spaces to two spaces at ten by twenty feet per stall. I'll quickly go through the background. His first hotel that he submitted was in two thousand and three. His last hotel was in two thousand and nine with Candlewood. As of December two thousand and nineteen, he submitted for his fourth hotel. So between March, right in the middle of the pandemic, between March two thousand and twenty to September two thousand and twenty-one, staff reviewed it multiple times, provided corrections, he met his corrections, and we also went through the environmental review process, and Lilburn Corp. did that work. So between October eighth through October twenty-eighth, we did the required twenty-day public comment period, should anybody have any comments for the initial study, the sequel portion of this project. On November third, we took this item to planning commission. Planning commission ended up continuing the item so the applicant can rework his hotel design and provide additional architectural elements, pronounced colors and materials, and noticeable variation in the roofline and wall massing. We took it to planning commission on December first, the revised updated plans, and they did approve it, both the hotel and the variance request. So tonight, what you're seeing is the most updated final version incorporating all of planning commission's comments. Before I get into the project, I just want to quickly go over the variance request. Once again, it's relief from the parking regulations, which would require one loading space for every ten thousand square feet of building, that is what our municipal code requires. Currently, the other hotels have either one or two loading spaces, because they were approved under the standards of the East Valley Corridor specific plan. You may recall earlier this year, this council repealed the East Valley Corridor specific plan, so it now falls under our regular municipal code. The EVC required one space per every fifty thousand square feet of hotel building area at ten by twenty dimensions per stall. Due to the proximity to each other, all four hotels, they don't all require a significant number of loading spaces, which is generally associated with big box stores or distribution centers. And Courtyard will provide its own laundry service. The two loading spaces, as opposed to seven, would accommodate the delivery, loading of furniture, small appliances, and food delivery. Similar to the other hotels, the two loading spaces would be consistent with the other hotels in Hotel Square, so the approval would not be detrimental to the public welfare, welfare, or interest to the properties in such vicinity, and the project as proposed continues to be consistent with the general plan. So that is a variance. Now we get into the details of the project. So this is to give you an idea of Hotel Square. It includes four hotel brands, the Holiday Inn Express, Town Play Suites, and Candlewood, and the new one is Courtyard.
Do you have a pointer so you can help us keep up with you?
Okay, so we have, here's Courtyard, that is the new proposed hotel. South on the screen is the Ten Freeway, okay? So directly west is Candlewood, approved in two thousand and nineteen. Then we have Holiday Inn Express even farther west, which was submitted in two thousand and thirteen. And then adjacent to the freeway is Town Play Suites, so Courtyard is the fourth hotels. And these hotels, the reason why we're providing this master site plan is because these hotels share amenities. A reciprocal access agreement is already recorded for the three sites as part of the conditions for the new hotel. The applicant is going to update it, and he'll address landscaping, parking, trash, and maintenance across all parcels. As combined, Hotel Square has more parking available than required. The site will now have a total of four hundred parking stalls. As for landscaping and lot coverage, those will also meet minimum requirements for Hotel Square. In terms of drainage, there are onsite wells for each lot, so water will remain onsite. Ingress and egress for all four hotels is primarily off Richardson. There's two driveways off Richardson, and there's another driveway coming from Redlands Boulevard, so it's a third access point. So now we zoom in, we see the sixty-six dedicated parking space for the subject site. Per the municipal code, now that we're under the general commercial zone, hotels require one space for every two guest rooms. The building footprint is approximately eighteen thousand square feet for a total building area of seventy-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one square feet. There will be decorative concrete stamp at each entryway on Richardson Street, as well as under the port cochere, and that's where the drop-off area for guests, and it will be a covered drop-off area. The hardscape feature will complement the existing and proposed landscaping adjacent to Richardson Street and throughout the development. A bike rack will be located on the northern elevation in its own little enclave. Within the design, the applicant has assigned four dual EV charging stations on the southern side that can charge up to seven cars at a time. The site meets ADA requirements in the parking area as well as the walking path. The general commercial zone requires a twenty-foot setback in the front yard. The project meets that at twenty feet four inches. Side and rear setbacks aren't required in this zone, but this hotel will have building setbacks on all sides. Each side of the building will have multiple access points, exits, and entries. This design is more functional for guests and staff, especially with the shared amenities. And to confirm, this design is in substantial conformance with the brand prototype required by Marriott. Marriott, however, does allow for some flexibility, hence the planning commission's recommendations at the last two meetings. The changes are listed in your staff report, and I will go over them in the next few slides. But first, I'll discuss landscaping. Twenty percent of the site will be landscaped with shrubs, flowers, trees, such as chitapa, date palm, day lilies. The choice of plants and location will play a significant role on how the future guests will experience their time at the hotel, providing them with natural elements that soften the walls of the building and the overall development. Floor plan. So Courtyard will have one hundred and twenty-five guest rooms and specific amenities found on the ground floor. So this is the ground floor floor plan as part of the prototype requirement. Once you get dropped off in the front and you walk through the vestibule, you will see a lobby with an interactive layout. At the center is a bistro restaurant, surrounded.
Where is the entrance again?
Right here, so right here, it has that covered port cochere, right, sorry, right. And this is that stamped concrete driveway, so you park your car, you walk in through, and immediately you see the reception to your left and to the right.
And the entrance is off of Richardson or off of?
So Richardson is right here to the left of the screen.
Okay, so how do I enter the hotel?
There's two driveways on Richardson, one is up here, I'll go, actually, I'll show you.
Is that Redlands Boulevard where you're pointing?
Here, here's the landscaping plan, and here's one entrance on Richardson, and here's where Candlewood's at, and here's the second entrance on Richardson. And when you enter through here, this is how you got to Town Play Suites on this farther north entrance to Richardson. There will be fully equipped fitness center, media pods to attend Zoom meetings or prepare reports, and a private meeting room that can host about thirty people. Guest laundry facilities are available too, and will be next to the commercial laundry facilities. There will be a large outdoor patio on the south-facing side of the hotel. In that patio will be a fire pit, water feature for guests to relax and enjoy.
If you want to keep going, then I can just ask all my questions at the end, I've got several already. But if you're looking at, is that a jacuzzi or whatever it is at the south end?
Right, south end.
And if I'm understanding, I'm gonna turn to the city manager on this, just on the other side of that is a new ophthalmology center that's going up, correct?
The GM Truck Center.
So that's at the, oh, oh. Is the ophthalmology center, okay, okay.
But at this location, there is no pool or a hot tub. This is actually just a decorative water feature in the patio, just for the guests to enjoy, yeah, fountain. Required with the hotel are two sets of stairs on each side, as well as two sets of elevators. The hotel is designed in an L shape with varying building massing heights and articulated facades to add scale and visual interest for the guests or anyone who drives down Richardson Street. This is a previous elevation, this is the first set we took the planning commission. This is not what you're approving today. At the planning commission, the commissioners agreed that the design did not have enough variation, and it had a cold institutional look, so they asked the applicant to provide stronger architectural elements, and those I will show in the next few slides. So this is the updated elevations, and I will quickly go over what planning commission requested. So they requested another material, so this, we have two different tile wood materials, one is darker and lighter than the other, they should be, the lighter one should be complementing the darker siding, and it'll also add warmth to the cool materials like the glass, metal, and block panels. The applicant also enlarged the architectural fin that you see here on the northern facade, creating a column at the ground level near the center to help break up the massing of the building. Accent lighting panels were also added on both sides of the fin to help illustrate the guest entry at night.
Can you move your pointer a little more slowly, because I'm having trouble keeping up with you?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So where are the tile differences? I'm having difficulty.
That's a great question. You can better see this is the actual tile he's going to use. So one's almost like a dark gray and one's a brown, it's full wood. And when we get to the rendering, and we have a rendering right here, you can better see the difference, the difference is with tile.
Okay, okay.
Unfortunately, this PowerPoint isn't the clearest one and doesn't provide the coloring.
They look the same to me on this rendition.
Yes, it actually does on this power, with this system. So the applicant also provided vertical variation of roof blinds and heights among the different sections of the building, and that's here on the top. So it's just not one plain flat roof. He substantially increased the guest room windows by removing the black panels under the original room windows and replaced it with double-hung windows. Again, these were all recommendations per city, per the planning commission. He indicated the location of the AC units, and he added exterior lighting panels at both ends of the building to enhance the building at night. And so I'm using the pointer to show both ends of the building where he added the enhanced lighting.
So, and I apologize, because I'm the only one interrupting you.
That's perfectly fine.
So when we look at the, at the left-hand side of the base of the building, and you're talking about enhanced lighting, what are those green spots I'm seeing?
That is just accent for the windows. No, that's a great question. So it's steel plates right next to the windows, and that is part of the Marriott prototype design and the new color for this new prototype. So it is just almost like accent shutters for the windows. Those are not lighting, the lightings are actually at the ends of the building. They have more of a yellow tint. Unfortunately, it's hard to see the yellow tint, but again, when I get to the night rendering, you'll have a better understanding.
Okay, thank you.
The structure will be four stories at height at a maximum of fifty-one feet. It has been designed with a flat roof and a tall parapet to screen all mechanical equipment. The applicant also revised the renderings to reflect the architectural changes in the elevations, as well as the massing, which is building size, shape, and scale alongside the parking area and landscaping. Here, you can better see the proposed stamped concrete in the outdoor patio. So here's the proposed stamped concrete that's going to be on the two driveways from Richardson Street, so this is coming on through the first driveway on Richardson Street. The second one is back here, and that's where Town Play Suite is. This is that outdoor patio for the guests to relax and enjoy.
So that's south side?
That is facing south, correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is also facing south, but further into the parking lot. Again, this is that outdoor patio.
Are you sure it's a patio and not a courtyard?
Very clever, you're right, that's the outdoor court. Very clever. You're right. That's the out, outdoor courtyard. On the building, they will be using tile, stucco, steel, cement, and the colors will be off-white, black, lime-green, gray, and dark, and light brown colors. The, the actual color names are on the material color boards right here to my left. And so the exterior finish will have contrasting colors and materials throughout the site on each elevation inside. You can't see it too well here, but in the main lobby area, there will be floor-to-ceiling windows. And here's where the cars can drop off their bags and their guests can go through the vestibule.
Okay, I'm, if you can speak into the microphone, it would help my aging ears. But are we on the, on the north side?
We are in the north-facing side now. So if you're standing out here, you can look towards the ten freeway.
Okay.
So as design, it complements the architectural characteristics of the neighboring buildings. And one of the most significant changes the commission recommended was the addition of lighting on the exterior elevations. This rendering provides a better visual of what to expect at night as you visit the site. So now we can better see that panel lighting I was talking about that kind of looked yellow in the previous elevations. So we see lighting right here all the way to the left. He also incorporated lighting on the siding of this light-colored tile on both sides. And it's also this, this section right here is projecting out now. So there'll be different projections and setbacks throughout the building, height variation, everything that I was talking about earlier. And now you can sort of see that green lime-green tile accent piece next to the double-hung windows. So as with every large project, we do have to do CEQA. So an initial study was completed in accordance with CEQA by Lilleburn. Potential impact studied included the cultural, hydrology, noise, bio, and traffic. This project is required to comply with Measure V, and it does. The traffic analysis was prepared by Urban Cross Road. The project is anticipated to generate a net total of approximately one thousand forty-six trip-ins per day. And because the peak hour trips are fewer than one hundred, we didn't have to do a vehicle miles traveled study. It was not warranted because it is a local serving in use. Improvements were completed with the first approvals in Hotel Square, and the applicant will continue to be required to pay his traffic fare share for improvements as well as development impact fees. And as with all initial studies and mitigated neck decks mitigations are required. So implementation of the mitigation measures would ensure acceptable ALOS consistent with Measure V during the peak hours. On the basis of the analysis.
I'm sorry, can you go back to your last slide? I'm, I'm trying to, my brain works more slowly than my colleagues, I guess. But when you say one thousand forty-six trip-ins per day, you're talking about the amount of traffic to the hotel on, from Richardson. Is that correct?
Or Redlands, but yes, pretty much that is.
Well, the only way they can get to Richardson is Redlands unless they go around through San Bernardino.
Yes, but I'm saying they would enter Hotel Square either through Redlands going west or on the two driveways on Richardson.
Hotel, if, if they enter off Redlands Boulevard heading towards Holiday Inn, they can get to this hotel?
Yes.
Okay, that is the missing link.
I can quickly show you again on the master site plan. Again, so Redlands is right here, so a car could enter here.
Yeah.
Or enter through these two driveways.
Okay, but if I get off the freeway, I'm not likely to go all the way around three other hotels to get to this one.
Like off of Mountain View Avenue?
Can, can you put the microphone closer to you? Okay.
It depends where you get off the freeway. You, you can just continue, get off Mountain View.
If I get off on Anderson, I'm gonna.
Then you'd have to go north on Richardson. That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm, I'm not giving you a hard time. I just want to understand.
So on the basis of the analysis with the initial study, the city concluded the project will not have a significant effect on the environment with the incorporation of mitigation measures, and is therefore prepared a mitigated negative declaration for your review and recommendation of adoption. We are required by law to do public noticing. We did notify the tribes per AB fifty-two, and only San Manuel responded, and they provided us with a list of mitigation measures for the cultural tribal resources. And as I said earlier, we did have a public comment period for the initial study in October. And for the council meeting, the notice of hearing went out on December second. We mailed it to the surrounding property owners. We published it, and we also posted it onsite and on our website. So to conclude, the applicant is providing the most appropriate design and layout. It's compatible with existing and future uses in the area. The initial study evaluated the potential impacts and identified appropriate mitigation measures. Conditions are in place to ensure appropriate compliance with mitigations, and findings have been made to support approval of the project, both the CUP and the variance. So staff, as well as the planning commission, is requesting city council adopt the MMD, adopt the mitigation monitor, monitoring and reporting program, approve the conditional use permit, and approve the variance request. So that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions as well as the applicant and the architect.
Could, for our edification, could you explain why hotels have half as many parking spots as rooms? Because I don't think people carpool to a hotel, a hotel.
When we were under the EVC, it had different parking requirements. So at the time, Haral actually provided more parking, he was providing one point one parking space per room. Under the municipal code, the code requires one per two-bedroom. Why it was written that way, it was possibly written, again, we have an older code than normal. So at the time, there was probably not as many cars on the street, and we're still working off of a, a code from the seventies in terms of parking regulations.
The other one is you're, you're presupposing a hundred percent occupancy.
Yeah, and he's gonna have bouncing occupancies among the four lots. I understand that, but is he worried that he's ever gonna have a, a big convention here and have to park people a hundred miles away?
We, we haven't, we haven't heard him worry about that. And kind of a secondary piece to that, if you see the site plan, he is looking at adding some additional parking along the, the Redlands Boulevard corridor for overflow. So.
It would be.
Where that purple is up at the top, that's a long strip, about two hundred feet before you get to Redlands Boulevard. That's all landscaping. Now we're looking at adding about twenty-five or thirty more parking spaces for the entire site for that overflow. So if he does have the mayor's breakfast or some type of convention or something, that we can handle that parking onsite.
It would be the mayor's breakfast that would pack it up, I'm sure, yeah, so. I've got a question if Dusty's finished. So there's three, currently three hotels, motels there. What, what's the typical or average occupancy rate of those three hotels? How do we know we need a fourth hotel? See, I was trying to get him to stand up. Now he, I, I asked the right question. I knew he'd have answers.
Good evening. First, well, Mayor Duper, prior Mayor Rigsby, council members. It's good to be before you again for the fourth time. To answer your question, we are at about ninety percent occupancy right now.
Across all three?
Across all, well, across all two. The third hotel is under construction.
Okay. That's very impressive. I see a lot of cars there, but I wanted to hear a number. So that's good.
Absolutely.
So you're making money.
Little bit.
More importantly, he's bringing money into the city.
You're making money.
Okay, well, that's even better. Among these three different motels, hotels, motels, I don't know the difference anymore. But what are your, who, who are your target consumers? Because we've got three there. So I, I don't know very much about marketing, but I know enough to know that Holiday Inn has a consumer in mind, so.
So they, they all have specific consumers in mind.
Right.
The first hotel, Holiday and Express, targets the average everyday leisure traveler for the most part, and some business travelers. The Town Place Suites is an extended stay product, so each of the guest rooms have kitchens. But it's not the highest-end extended stay product that Marriott had. So it's, it's basically a middle-of-the-road extended stay product aimed towards either leisure travelers or blue collar or even white collar business workers that, that need to stay for extended period of time. They find themselves on, you know, an assignment for seven, ten days. They don't want to go out and eat at a restaurant every day. They want to do some of their own cooking. Candlewood Suites is, is more of your, I wouldn't say lower end because there's far lower end extended stay products than Candlewood Suites. But the, the differentiator there is that we don't offer breakfast as an offering in that hotel. And so that price point would be slightly lower, and the amenities there are a little bit less. Town Place Suites has a restaurant currently, meeting space, some larger amenities, pool, whereas the Candlewood does not. And then this final hotel, Courtyard, is primarily aimed at your everyday business traveler that's on the road two, three hundred days of the year. And, you know, your, your white collar business traveler that's on the road a lot and needs a lot of business amenities, business center, things of that nature, and looking for a higher-end room.
Okay, that's very helpful, and it's a perfect entree into my last question, which is, one of the, when we do, well, I mean, my kids are all grown and gone, but when we used to do family trips, we always looked for a motel hotel with a restaurant close by because we wanted to eat breakfast, and whether it was a Denny's or whatever. One of my concerns is we've got, you know, a, a group of four hotels here, and where are they gonna eat? I know some of them are gonna provide, provide breakfast of sort. And I'm, I'm chuckling because I've stayed at those hotels. I know what the breakfasts are like. But one of our constituents has talked with me about the possibility of having a, a restaurant, whether it's on a rooftop restaurant or on the ground restaurant or, and quite honestly, that makes a lot of sense to me. If we've got that many hotels, motels, all in one region, that we would have some kind of, of restaurant facilities in which they could eat breakfast, dinner, or whatever. Have you thought that through? And if so, what's, what's the outcome of your thinking?
We have. I have a feeling I know who that constituent might be. And the Courtyard Hotel does have a restaurant on premise. It's, it's called a bistro. It's part of their typical prototype concept. So not only will be, will be, will we be offering cook-to-order breakfast in the morning, but also throughout the day, there will be food and beverage offerings. And currently, we have.
So this will be in, in the courtyard?
This will be in the courtyard. And currently in the Town Place, we also have an offering, but it's been closed in, in, during the COVID environment.
Okay, okay.
In addition to that, the, the medical office building at Redlands and Richardson, that's currently under construction. Part of the, the plant, the, the design of that building is that it's pre-plumbed and pre-built for a restaurant to be on the, the corner suite.
Be the corner of Richardson and Redlands?
Yes. So there's a building going in there.
So ophthalmology practice is gonna have a restaurant?
In the, in the south, the southeast corner of that building, there's not, I can't guarantee you it there, but it will be built out so that there's the ability to add a restaurant without doing major renovations. With the goal to bring from the city to bring restaurants into that area, that it becomes a hospitality hub. And part of it is, there needs to be some synergy. At some point, you get a room count.
Sure.
Where Denny says I'm gonna, or whoever it is says I'm gonna drop a restaurant here. And we're beginning to get to that, that point.
Well, and that's the point I'm getting to, and, and so I'm pleased to hear that. I, I think we're also. Do you have contact with the people that are putting the ophthalmology practice in on the corner there?
I, I don't, but we can, we can discuss.
Well, I think, I think it would be, I, I don't know what their incentive is, but I would think there would be incentive for you to have an interest in that for your clients.
I think there's also some interest in, again, because we have such a great working relationship. We're talking about what the future of Area D is gonna look like and potentially hotels there as well. So I think there's some opportunities here. Again, we've been, we've been very blessed with a great relationship here with this, with this company, so.
And that would make sense to me as well. It's just, I want to know if we've planned it or.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of that stuff's being talked about because I've heard a lot of that.
We are working, we are working. We've brought several restaurants to the developer of the ophthalmology building. They really, they have not come to agreement on anything yet, but it's one of those. If you bring them enough prospects, sooner or later, somebody's gonna fall in love and we'll get that restaurant there with the ideas, as Mayor Duper said, that Redlands Boulevard really can become a hospitality corridor and a welcoming place that does not have a bus line going through the middle of it.
That's my point exactly.
And that's, that's kind of what we're.
We're on the same page there. Yeah, and, and so I'm delighted we're on the same page. But my question is, are we getting the cart before the horse? I support the project, you know, I'm for this. But I'm thinking about the city of Loma Linda and the, the potential clients that we're trying to attract. We want to provide them with the appropriate amenities so they don't head up the road to Redlands where they can potentially get them. So that's my issue here is, is it's all on paper right now.
From an economic development standpoint, it's kind of just like retail. You need the rooms, you need the rooftops before the, the other piece follows. So you're not gonna have a restaurant outpost without enough rooms and enough people.
And fair enough, but we've got three hotels there right now.
And we're getting, we're getting to critical mass, yes.
If I could, if I could step in, and it sounded like, Ron, at least preliminarily, you're supportive of this. Is there any way we could take a move on these, this particular item? Because I'm gonna have to get running here, sorry.
Yeah, no.
And, and absolutely we can.
If I, if I can just address one more quick thing about parking. We, we do have four hundred stalls, and on the campus, we'll have about three hundred and ninety-seven guest rooms. So right now, we do have at least one-to-one. And when, when and if we add the additional fifteen, twenty stalls, then we will have more than ample coverage.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, can I entertain a motion?
Do we have to do a public hearing?
We'll open the public hearing. Seeing nobody running forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration for this project. Adopt mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Approve the conditional use permit number P dash, P nineteen dash two eighteen, and approve variance number P twenty-one dash zero one eight, and approve the conditional use, well, I guess that's the entire thing. It's, there's nothing in the body of the motion. It's just the A, B, C, D.
Based upon the findings and including the conditions of approval.
Of course.
And I'll second that, but I still have one more question. I'm not letting this restaurant and facilities go. Do you have a vested interest, and I'm assuming you do, to be sure that we provide, we, the city, ensures that there are additional amenities to take care of the people that would? Because I want you to have, I'm impressed with ninety percent occupancy. A hundred percent would be even better. But I think in order to achieve that, we do need to look at this issue of restaurants.
And real, real quick, not, and not to get into it this evening, but there has been some other discussion on some other things that we have had and Conrad and I have had that I think you would definitely be interested in, not related to the approval of this specifically, but yes, to get, to really. Not related to the approval of this specifically, but yes, to get um, to really improve the occupancy and really drive a business down there. There's some, there's some other things that are going on.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I I wholeheartedly agree and and uh, share your sentiments that guests coming into the city and staying at our hotel. Want and deserve uh, a variety of amenities, including restaurants and and entertainment uses and things of that nature. So I'm in full support of whatever. Uh, you know, whatever we can do to make that happen in or around.
You would be open to working collaboratively with the city and whoever the additional. Potential developers are to make that happen?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Patel calls him about every six months and asks where we are on restaurants and what we can do to help him to feed his guests, so.
It might be every four months.
He has an active, active involvement in that.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm an outsider, so I don't know all this inside stuff.
Madam Clerk, um, could you call this real quick? Oh, yes, we did. I closed it.
I'm sorry. Um, the motion was to adopt the mitigated mitigated negative declaration. To adopt the mitigated monitoring and reporting program to approve conditional use permit number P nineteen dash two one eight. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval and to approve the variance number. P twenty-one dash zero one eight to allow a reduction of loading spaces from seven to two spaces. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval. Councilman Lenart. Councilman Rigsby.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daly.
I.
Mayor Duper.
Yes.
The item passed.
Thank you very much. And congratulations. Um, how soon can you get it in?
Very shortly.
I want to say, I mean, I see you've been digging dirt over there already, but. To kind of state the obvious, thank you so much for your support of the development of the city of Loma Linda. You've obviously been very successful up to this point. Taken some risks, uh, but it it uh, by any evidence I see, it's been very successful, so. It represents good management and good investment and and so it's been a good collaboration between city and business.
May I speak real quick?
Yes, but I I'm gonna have to run out the door.
No problem.
Um, and uh.
I I I appreciate that. And I just want to take a second to to thank, as I always do. The uh, the council and city staff who've always been very supportive of our projects and. Held our hand the entire way and been very cooperative both ways. So it's always been a very. Good relationship and you're one of the easiest cities to work with that we've ever developed. So very much appreciated.
What's your projected completion date on this?
Uh, for this hotel. Twenty twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
So we probably start construction late next year and it'd probably be about sixteen to eighteen months after that.
What's all the digging they're doing down there now then?
That's the, that's number three, the Candlewood Suites.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That I need to get open first.
Okay, see, I can't keep up with you.
Not a problem. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I I believe that takes us to the consent calendar. Are there, is there anyone who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, but uh. I don't want to disappoint Councilman Lenart. I do have a couple of questions on it. Item number seven. Um, and and I have to concede, I was not able to read the entire packet, so there, I'm sure there's something in the packet that I didn't see. Appropriate uh, a million fifty for Major Street Arterial Subprogram Fund balance in six, anyway. Can you put that in regular language so I can understand?
Yes, when when the uh, like the hotel submit the projects to the city, they have to pay the opening pack fee. One of them is traffic mitigation, another one is regional, which this money go to SBCTA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this is the MS. Major Street Art Hero Subprogram Fund is is the funding that held by SBCTA for the city of Loma Linda. So we have funding over there, so we have to. Get it from them.
And that's what we're going to use to widen California street.
We use two funding, one from from Sanback, SBCTA, another one is the traffic mitigation fund.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And what's the timetable we're projecting on that?
I'm I'm starting, the goal is to start construction in the middle of next month and and be sixty day. About sixty working days, so three months, three months.
Really? To widen the entire?
Well, it might be, the hard, the longest item is is putting the storm drain. And as soon as the storm drain in, the rest is pretty easy.
But will that, will that widen it from Mission all the way to Redlands Boulevard?
No, sir. No, sir. This mission to the Indonesian Church. So there's there's three lots of the residential. Property that 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 I have to buy the whole thing to to be able to widen the street, not me, the city.
But there's not some narrow spots beyond the Indonesian church?
Yes, yes.
I thought, yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
Yes.
Well, this looked like a real bargain to me, but now I realize I.
I'm doing faces, sir. This is the second face.
Okay, okay. The other question I had was related to item ten on the consent calendar.
Yes.
Request to amend the entirety and authorize recordation of the previously adopted, you help me understand.
Last time when they came to us, they only asked for the uses of water. But we forgot, they forgot to ask us for the use of sewer. So so what they're doing is we'll provide both the water and sewer.
Okay, because I thought I recognized this, but I didn't.
Yes, yes, they came to us before.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions about items on the consent calendar? If not, all in favor say aye.
Want to do a roll call?
Do we need to do a roll call? I wouldn't think so. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? I think we we.
Unanimously.
Approve the consent calendar.
Unanimously.
Unanimously, thank you. Okay, um. Under new business, uh, we'll point out that we've also already discussed the. Uh, disappointment in losing Richard Holloway and the excitement of bringing Diane Robinson. Robbins in as the city attorney. So just to note that, which we already discussed earlier. City council meeting schedule is in your packet. Any reports from councilmen?
The donkeys. Are we doing anything about the donkeys? I drove home the other day and I counted twenty-eight donkeys. Between on Beaumont, between Huldakrooks Park and the duck park.
Is that all?
Yeah, it was a, it was a light night, I guess.
It was a light night. We've we've counted up to eighty.
The, I I used to see them in other places, but now I'm seeing them. Some people reported seeing them down here.
We we have had them as low as Barton Road, certainly into into um, the park by Bryn Mawr Elementary. Um, we've had as herds as big as eighty come down. We kind of run them back up into the hills. We're working with um, an organization, one out of Texas and one in Moreno Valley. Um, basically the donkey, donkey wranglers. Who uh, basically take the herds and run them back up into the hills. Um, the one out of Texas does work on relocating them, but they tend to be fairly expensive. So right now the plan is get them back in the hills. It's. It's going to be an ongoing problem with the drought. The vegetation up there is pretty much dried up. They've eaten down just about everything there is. They're down here for food and water. Um, one of the considerations, we do have latitude with code enforcement or with animal control to do it by state law. But fish and wildlife isn't terrible and and BLM, donkeys fall under the Bureau of Land Management, isn't terribly excited. We could set up feeding stations back up in the hills and watering stations. To keep them up there, but you know, buying buying hay for donkeys that don't produce anything. Other than fertilizer is is not a real good investment. So we are, we are exploring, but right now we are running them back up when we get a chance.
But we're aware of the problem.
Oh, we are painfully aware of the problem, yes.
We have people visiting us and they said, there's donkeys. I said, it's a big coyote. I've never seen any donkeys down here. I ran into them on the way home and I, I don't even care. They just kind of look at you, just weave around them a little bit.
What what we do ask and and if people are watching is, please do not feed the donkeys. Please do not engage the donkeys. These are wild animals. They're cute, they're they're cuddly, they look really nice. They bite, they kick. They are wild animals. They will hurt you. So please, please don't engage the donkeys and and we will continue to move them back into the hills.
And they will total your vehicle. If you run into them. Now, if we hadn't chased off the skunks, would there be as many donkeys?
Um, I I think, well, my joke was always the skunks and the coyotes balance each other. We're just a little out of balance there. I really think the donkeys are a a function of the drought. Um, even with the rain we had now, you're not going to get anything green up there for three, four months. Summer's going to kick in, it'll die off. Um, realistically, short of, you know, rounding up donkeys and keep running them back in the hills on a routine basis. It's probably going to be a year before we have any real resolution to the the donkey issue. Um, we we certainly, I mean, I think if we took the extreme route of of having a, you know. A donkey roundup and and a bunch of guys hunting donkeys, that would would not be an appropriate response either. So it's one of those things we're going to have to find the right balance.
Is there any interest from the California Democratic Party?
From the what?
They probably voted, uh, they probably voted, Dusty. They probably came down to vote.
They need a spokesperson.
Yeah. Uh, Dusty, you open, open that up. I've got so many responses.
How many, how many, how many uh, elephants have you seen?
Yeah.
In Loma Linda?
We won't go there.
It's all donkeys.
No, it 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 is, I I agree, it is a problem. I, just this last weekend, we had relatives over to the house and. Took our dog for a walk and went up and around the dog park and Huldakrooks and they go, man, people don't pick up their dog poop. And then they realized, this isn't dog, there's no dogs that can leave this. And uh, they had no clue that we had these. Burrows, that's it. They're not really donkeys or mules, they're burrows, right? Yeah, California burrows.
And and if anybody is really civic minded and a gardener, that is really good stuff. So if you're willing to rake it up and haul it off.
Free, no charge.
Okay.
Now, what do you call the babies? Burritos.
All right, any other comments or questions from councilmen? Um, only question I have is. And Jarb, I can come pick you up, but there are a number of houses in Loma Linda where it's tumbleweeds and. Uh, this is not just trying to water conservation, this is going way overboard. Okay, okay, good. Oh, the other question that I had is what about the welcome to city of Loma Linda sign at the Mountain View and Ten?
I have to order it, sir.
What?
We have to order. We just completed.
What happened? Somebody run it over?
Yes, yes, yes.
So same thing we've had before?
Yes, on on Redlands Boulevard and to the west part of town. We just replaced that one last month.
So is it possible to order some that we can just keep in stock? So when somebody runs it over, we can send them a bill? Eighteen thousand?
Yes, sir.
And and is that charged to the person that misses the off ramp?
It it was a hit and run. Was, did you, did we call that guy? We replaced it from a concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
Monument because they injured in their sewers. So now we we went with a flexible one. So they hid it and then it just.
Destroys it?
Yeah, so it's coming.
How long does it usually take to replace them? I just out of curiosity.
I I think that one probably take three months, but but I will. I think we have a form now. This one might be faster. They only have the the form, yeah.
And whoever blows over the sign is responsible for it? Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Reports from officers.
I have one. Uh, this meeting will be Conrad's last meeting. He is going to become his new city manager for City of Grand Terrace.
And on the one hand, congratulations. On the other hand, can we vote this up or down? Will it make a difference?
Did they approve it?
Uh, yeah, that's why I came in late. They just, they just approved that, so you would have to arm wrestle with the city council of Grand Terrace, but thank you for the sentiment. It is, it has been an honor and a privilege to work with with all of you. And um, you know, this, this is really a remarkable council. Any anytime somebody asks, I just, I tell them, this is the the smartest council. And by virtue of what they do for a living, they make decisions. They get complicated ideas, they grasp it quickly and then they make decisions about it. So it's been absolute treat. Working with you and I've been so proud to be a servant in the city of Loma Linda with Jarb and the staff and 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 the community. I really value this time and appreciate it. Thank you for that opportunity.
And you will not be moving to Grand Terrace, right?
No, not unless someone wants to buy my house.
So you'll still be here in Loma Linda?
Yeah, I'll be here and if if the meetings go early, I'll come back here and be in the audience and give my feedback, yeah.
And when is the transition scheduled to occur?
Uh, my last day here is the thirty-first and my first day there is the fourth. So I'll I'll be unemployed for three days. If anybody has any side jobs.
I do.
So yeah, it'll be a quick transition. And Jarb is is working on. Backfilling me. I I made the joke earlier day and it's, not even the joke, seriously. It's amazing how quickly you can become superfluous. And uh, it it says, it says a great deal about the staff and and the organization here that I I'm quickly becoming not necessary.
I hear you. I know what you're talking about. I've seen it happen. I'm not sure it's applicable in this situation, but I guess we're going to find out. But the good news is you're close by and uh, I've got your cell number and I'm sure Jarb does, so.
We're going to keep the voice monitor against our still for the for the the rave and sand we do.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll keep that as the rave location and certainly, you know, I'm looking forward to working with, you know, with Jarb as. As the two cities together. And and on one last note, I want to thank you, um, Councilman Rigsby for putting all the candies in front of the fat kid. It's going to be a great time.
You kind of won the lottery over there in that corner.
So.
Go ahead.
In all these years, I've never been one to unnecessarily extend a meeting, as you know, but. I did want to take just a moment to thank you again for your kind words and the opportunity to be of service here. And um, thank you for the vote of support for our firm and continuing our service with you. Diana is a great attorney and even better person, so you're in good hands. I'd like to thank my wife, Chris, who's here with us. All those late meetings, she was home with the kids or in later years by herself. And I appreciate her support. You know, there's a saying about. What happens when husbands retire from the wife's perspective, it's twice the husband and half the money, so. But I feel I'm in good hands with her. And I look forward to spending more time with her if we could just get her to retire. As far as working here with staff, uh, everybody's been great. Uh. You know, we've, we've had good friendships over all these years and some have passed on and some have been voted out of office, but. Um, everybody was always a good friend to work with. And it was an honor to be here. There's so many memories. Uh, you mentioned my son. Douglas and I, Pam got us down on an RDA property. Uh, Douglas and I, Pam got us down on an RDA property, ripping the roof off and cleaning up the property one day. And that was, that was a memory. And, uh, Floyd Peterson took Douglas and me around the campus and when he was thinking about medical school. And I'll remember that. So there are many memories. So, you know, I spent one night counting the homeless out in the bushes and different things like that. Uh, the long meetings, the, the after-meeting conversations out in the parking lot. I always looked forward to those. You know, our experiences together, for good and bad, have brought us together. And I'll never forget the time spent here at Loma Linda. You know, when I, we've moved already, but we've been back and forth. And to be honest, I don't miss where I used to live. But when I come back to Loma Linda, it feels like home in a way.
Good.
And, uh, I will miss you all and miss coming to the city, although I may show up from time to time over the next few months, uh, transition period. And, uh, thank you again for all your support, and it's been an honor and a, a privilege to work here.
How many years have you been with the city?
Well, I was trying to count that, and I was formally appointed twenty-five years ago. But before that, I was deputy to Gene Demchuk for a few years while he was semi-retired. So I can never remember exactly how long that's been. Uh, but it's been a lot of good years and it's passed very quickly.
Very good, very good. Well, um, as I said earlier, I've, I've always wanted to be sure I had people around me that were smarter than me and it didn't take me long to identify you as one of those people. And you've, you have, your wisdom and experience has certainly benefited the city. But, uh, uh, your personal reflection of wisdom of I have benefited from personally. So I appreciate that, and, and on behalf of the city, thank you so much for all you've done. I also happen to know that, uh, I've been part of what used to be a, uh, a guys golf group. Eight of us, there's not eight of us any longer. But we'd go out, uh, every September, October and play at some different place. So I've, in, with that group, I've played golf courses in St. George's a few times. Got some great golf out there.
Yes.
Uh, golf courses are a lot better than I am a golfer, but, uh, they're beautiful. So, uh, if, if we come out, you may have to host a bunch of old men that look like me and.
Well, Diane's a big golfer too, so I was just talking to her today about coming up to St. George's to
Yeah.
experience those courses.
Yeah, good. Anybody else? Okay, then I think that leads us to adjournment. So, uh, we'll go ahead. I don't got, I don't have the big hammer, but we'll declare this meeting of the city council adjourned. Do we have? I'm looking through my agenda. Do we have other stuff here? Okay, redevelopment agency. We'll call the meeting. Oh, well, it says redevelopment, but I see. Okay, okay. My mentor, the ex-mayor, is trying to keep me straight here. Uh, successor agency, we have an agenda. And are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any public comments? Okay.
Move the consent calendar?
Yeah, that's what I was getting to. All right, so we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, thank you. Now we will move to the housing authority. And we have an agenda, consent calendar. Oh, okay. Any items to be added or deleted? I, I've sat on this council for twelve years now. There's never been an item added or deleted on this, but, so I, all right.
If you skip it, then you don't get credit for breaking the record for the shortest meeting.
That won't happen. Okay, any oral reports or, uh?
Public.
Any comments from the public? Okay, now we're to the consent calendar. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We are finished. Thank you all very much for coming. I appreciate it.